Right, then we'll call the meeting. Order. First item is, is there anything urgent to the agenda?
I have nothing to do.
Done? Good. Would somebody like to move adoption to the agenda? Games? Any questions or concerns on the agenda? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. And moving on to accounts payable for information. Chris? Any questions or concerns on any of the accounts payable?
I have one question.
Okay, go ahead Jim.
That is regarding the tree lighting thing. Like this, how many? There's four different invoices that come from tree lighting. What is the total of tree lighting? Are they all in here now?
I don't have that tally yet. Melanie is still working on that.
Okay, because it seems like it's getting more and more expensive every year for fewer and fewer people being there.
You're talking the Christmas. Yeah, Christmas tree lighting.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if it's, you know, for the amount of money that we're spending, is it really where the bank is? Are we really getting the bank back?
Were you there?
No.
I know.
I heard from another. I heard from other.
I wasn't. There was a decent amount of people I thought this year. It was a nice night.
It was a good show to go there. Yeah, it was cold though.
It was cold, yeah. It's getting colder though.
I thought it was paid for through grant funding through FCSS.
Yes, there's a certain amount that SCSS is allocated. It's grant, but I don't have the summary tonight.
Okay.
I have two other, I have two questions. I can only remember one of them right now and I don't need to sit on here. The, uh, the boot left rental for the Christmas lights. How long did we rent it for? It's for nine hundred and some dollars from, that's probably like two days, maybe a week.
Yeah, one day.
One day?
It is one day. We get the Christmas light up in one day.
You guys get creepy, right?
They drop it off the night before. We're ready to do it at eight AM when we start and they pick it up the morning after.
Not unless the question is why so expensive because?
Well, it's about five hundred dollars a day.
Plus, the last time I rented, it's a couple hundred bucks just to drop off and pick up.
Oh, I cancelled your living.
Deliver your fuel and the machine.
Right. None of that stuff comes free. You're better off keeping it for a month. It gets cheaper by the day.
Yeah.
Well, I guess they, they wanted to buy a scissor lift, if you remember a couple of years ago for the water treatment plant. And we said at that time.
I think they wanted to do one simple repair inside, please kind of hand drive it if I remember correctly.
Yeah. And typically, like I know our company, we rent a lot of lifts because in the long run, it's not worth it to own.
Yeah.
Your maintenance, your upkeep.
Yeah, it's the only thing that popped behind is that number is because, I mean, I know it's different. We got that, uh, Skyjack over there, scissor lift. And so I had to pay down a little bit for that. So I got a quote on how much it would cost to rent it. And that's about what I got a quote for a month.
Was it for a little guy though?
It was a smaller one, yeah. But it's about the same size as what's sitting beside my building.
That's true. I don't think the scissor lift would work for the lights.
I'm not saying it would. I know it is different, but comparable, I think, by uneducated opinion.
I think that's probably going rate. I don't know if they charge down double just because it's done.
I don't think they do either anymore now.
You forgot. Now, we had Christmas lights all the way to United Rental. We could just start there and go this way.
Something to consider.
Anyway, any other, did you think of your other question?
I was busy talking.
Well, I'll ask.
I put your thinking on pause.
Um, I, I asked Shannon about the Florida meeting, but I told her I'd probably bring a couple up. Um, EFT seven, five, six, one for transit paving, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Just wondering if that was a budget. She said, yes, it is for multiple. Line items. So I was just wondering if you could clarify, because I don't remember ever seeing that big of a number in sidewalk repair.
So there's two accounts for that one. We have a sidewalk repair and an asphalt repair. Sidewalk was budgeted at a hundred thousand and asphalt repair was budgeted at a hundred and sixty-five.
Thank you.
And then, uh, the other one I was going to ask about was the, um, seven, five, four, one for replace fixtures, whether they be lights. You said that was for, sorry, which was?
That was at the Ball Diamonds?
Oh, the Ball Diamond lights in the.
But it was a reissuance. It was in a previous AP list, but.
Yeah.
Um, because some financial information changed on their end.
Yeah.
So it got bounced back and then we had to reissue it.
What is the grade check in Jasmine?
So, I'm, when someone has first a lot, we have to confirm the grades. We get benchmarked out to check the grades and then so they can sign off and release the.
First G two on Jasmine?
Where is, which number? Sorry.
Uh, that's a good question.
Yeah, I've seen that one too.
Seventy-five, twenty-three.
Thank you. Three oh two Jasmine Drive.
It's a big lot.
I don't know. It just says grade check.
That's three oh two Jasmine Drive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pardon me? Sure.
It's part of the lease to Casey, uh, this term. You did a great checking, sure that the grades are complete. So this could be twenty years on. Changes.
All February, so it's, oh, thank you. But so we got to pay for that.
We covered it off in private once out.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, receiving information, opposed, that is carried. And then moving on to part two with delegation. And we have Deloitte.
Wonder if we could have them at the end and then I can end the stream and.
Can they hear us? Can they, do you get anything?
They can't. They're not in at all. They have no access, even though I invited them. I'll have to figure out something else.
Okay.
Gee, I'm not there on that thing, so I should. The issue.
All right, well, then we will move on and.
No.
If, if you do get them up and running, we will interrupt the regularly scheduled meeting just for them. Okay. Then we'll move on to minutes. And do you need a moment alone? Like, are you gonna go out and try to talk to them? Or you're gonna do it right here? Okay?
Well, I'm actually late because I was able to get in.
It will stay out.
Oh, not now. God, I'm just testing.
All right.
Let's be that. Out. Need it.
Council minutes of December ninth for adoption. But the Arizona missions. Seeing none, all in favor. Proposed, that is carried. And the emergency advisory committee meeting. Larry.
It looks like it was really long. You guys went all out?
Larry. It was, it was a lunch meeting.
It's a quick lunch.
Without lunch.
Yeah.
He had nothing to do with lunch.
I don't remember getting to lunch.
You came on your lunch.
Why were we at the meeting before the meeting that people say anybody happened to?
Sure, that's what happened. All right.
Yeah.
Yes, it was short.
Emergency advisor committee.
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor. Both, that's carried. And then moving on to the Red Cliff Cypress Regional Waste Management Authority meeting for information. Larry. Any questions or concerns, Chris?
What was the greenhouse issue? That's mentioned in the first month. See.
The greenhouse issue.
Greenhouse concerns.
The greenhouse concern is, uh, we're trying to utilize the waste from the greenhouses and we're having trouble with the vines. And the string that ties up the vines.
I figured it was strings, yeah.
To, uh, put it through the shredder. And we're trying to figure out a way to do that because that was one of the reasons why that we wanted the compost facility was to utilize all the organics that were lying into our landfill and the greenhouse. That's a lot.
I remember years ago, Hubers used to let greenhouse operators dump free on land, uh, right by the train tracks there and on that corner, as long as there's no pine there. And we could, so we had to take it out, hit the pine out and we tore the plants out.
There's an issue.
Yeah.
They've got a different point now. It's a working progress.
Yeah, fair enough. I assumed it might have something to do with the twice.
We have started a meeting. Can you hear me? I'm here on this.
It's not gonna work.
It's not to our lodge text, so they're not. I said mine to allow you because, did you try my way one more time?
Okay, so any other questions about the last thing? Favor, receiving information, opposed, that's carried. Do you have them? Not, not really.
You wouldn't be able to hear them. They're gonna try, I'm hoping they're gonna try my way one more time.
Okay. All right, and we'll go to the Red Cliff Public Library Board Meeting for Information. Can you move those? Jim?
Jim, you missed again.
I believe I was here that time.
Okay, any questions about the meeting? Seeing none, all in favor, receiving for information, opposed, carried. Bylaws. So we have bylaw number nineteen eighty slash twenty twenty-five being the tri area inter municipal development plan. And are you gonna hand out?
Well, once you can put it on the table for.
Okay.
Put it on the table for first reading.
Kathy wants to put it on. Okay, and then.
So then just with regards to page one sixty-six. Should we have the packet? Uh, there seems to be an error just with that map. And Mike can elaborate a little bit further.
Um, do you? Um, do you?
Um, do you? Yep, it's not there.
There, but I don't, oh, we don't hear them. Do we hear you?
Uh, they're muted right now.
Hello.
Are there?
Well, it's worth it. Now, if you just bear with us for one minute, we're right in, or do you want to just stop it? No, we're in the middle of it.
You're right in the middle.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Mike, if you can expand on this.
Okay, so on map A on that page. Page sixty of one forty-three of that item. So map A, um, on the north side of Red Cliff, there was, uh, originally a strip of quarter section land. Um, that was designated as the Red Cliff Future Urban Growth Area. Later on in our discussions, we added that cross hatching of having that regional heavy industrial collaboration planning area. Um, that gray cross hatch was put over top of the purple that was there as our growth area. So our growth area is still there. We're just trying to figure out how to get the two area on the maps to not cover each other. So our future growth area is still existing there. Um, it's just not showing up on this map, but it will be, um, prepared for second reading on the public hearing.
Okay. So all it is, is this is the true first reading map because that one, you know, erased or overlaid and isn't showing anymore.
And does everyone here, uh, like come up to date on what's going on with all this I N E P by law stuff? A lot of this happened in I N C, but um, like this. Um, obviously we're talking about the floor, but there's map changes to south side of the city. It doesn't really affect us. They changed some different uh, designations and created separate um, items in the bylaw for those new designations and the rules inside those designations as far as block size, what you can do on that, so on and so forth. But then the latest one was this regional heavy industrial collaborative planning area. Um, to kind of come up with a, a base guideline that's unilateral across the three municipalities to encourage and reduce red tape. If there's future industrial growth on the north side. Um, that, uh, you know, could be coming or potentially or not coming or whatever, but just to try to make it a little more seamless, a little less red tape, a little more collaboration between the three to try to bring things into alignment. But it was stated multiple times, I believe in the absolute, I can correct if I'm wrong on this. Um, by the working group that if, if they're building in Red Cliff, then it's still Red Cliff's misuse bylaws. Building, permitting, all that stuff in Cypress County, Cypress Counties. If it's in the cities, the cities. Um, and the only time when it might potentially be an issue is if there wasn't a cross border development. Um, but that's just kind of for a regional outline is supposed to make it just a little bit easier. So fair.
Get a little more attractive perhaps.
That too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I think Brian has talked about it as well. Right?
Did he talk about it here?
Well, we do that MOU that we signed. We signed it.
Oh, okay.
It was a motion to sign, so we signed it.
Yeah, so it kind of goes along collaboratively with the MOU.
Yeah. Right. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Read them both and compared them right down to the fine print. I got.
All night.
Yeah. There is quite a few changes, but for the most part, they're between Madison and Cypress County. Things is right on that down, down on the south end. There's all kinds of, the west side, the greenhouse area is gone. All that stuff is gone.
That's very contentious anyway.
Yes, and that's what started this whole thing. And
Yeah.
And I think now it does say in there every six years, but I don't believe we've held that to task. So maybe now it will be. Or when, or whenever somebody wants. Okay. Anybody with questions or concerns? Otherwise, I'll call the question.
Just to note that there is a public hearing that we will need attendance on at, on February twelfth.
I'm not gonna be there.
At six thirty.
We have to have a majority to be there.
We have to have, uh, at least five.
Because if you're not there, you can't vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm also not.
That means.
Thanks?
No. That means there's still five left. Now there's four left. Well, if you're at the public hearing, it's just.
Pretty much, except it's day nine with the lights and valley nights.
Right, well.
I cancel that.
You're ready, okay. It'll be interesting then.
Public hearing was supposed to happen in January. Instead, it's right there. It's twelve. Okay, what time is it?
Thirty.
All right.
Yeah.
Sorry, college. Here's the tier.
All right. Well, all in favor. Both, that is carried. Okay. Now, our presentation has finally arrived and
So we're done now.
Technology is holding out. So
Talk fast.
Welcome. Sorry for the glitches. The floor is yours.
That's quite all right. I'm glad we got it sorted out. Um, good evening or nice to be with you. Um, just to clarify, how long would you like us to, uh, to take for the presentation?
I had allotted, I think we had allotted about twenty minutes to thirty minutes.
Okay, okay, great. We'll, we'll try to be, uh, as concise as possible, but we have a fair bit of material to cover. So, um, uh, good evening again. My name is Jamie Vansworth. I'm a senior manager with the economic advisory team at Deloitte here with my colleague Darcy Acton. We were both part of the, uh, the team that worked on this project. Um, you want to just go ahead a few slides, Darcy? Just keep going, yeah. Uh, some of you may have met some other team members. Paul Blaze is our director for the project. Rebecca Taylor was also heavily involved. If you were at some of the, uh, the summits and the other, uh, consultation meetings, you may have met her over time. We also had a advisory panel of some senior experts in Deloitte on, uh, some different subject matters that, uh, contributed to the project. Um, this is the steering committee that we worked with very closely over the course of the project, uh, in Red Cliff. Of course, uh, Carla was, was handling it in the early part of the project and Shannon helped us over the last number of months. Uh, just as a, as a rough, uh, a broad overview of the timeline of the project, it started early in twenty twenty-four, uh, really got rolling in about March. Uh, the first part of the project was our team was doing a lot of background analysis of, uh, the commu- the community economy, uh, different demographics. Uh, we did a series of interviews. There were meetings held in each of the, uh, six partner communities in Southeast Alberta. We prepared some discussion papers on key topics in regional economic development and, uh, all of this led up to an initial summit that happened in April where we, we discussed what we had heard so far. And, uh, members of, uh, the community in terms of, um, both elected officials in each of the six communities, staff members, uh, different service organizations that are involved in economic development. There were quite a number of business people that were participating as well. There were over sixty people at that first summit and that, uh, that the, the discussion and the exercise we went through there was to help us identify that the priorities and that the strategic directions that we should be going. So following that, uh, we went away and did some more work on, um, on, on filling in details of those directions, coming up with some options for how the community and, and the region, uh, could work together. Uh, this all culminated in a second summit at the end of August, which, uh, brought together a slightly smaller group. This group focused mailing on the, the public sector and the service sector organizations. It wasn't, we didn't feel as relevant for the, for the business community to attend. It was getting into more of the, the nuts and bolts of how the, the six communities would actually agree to work together. And following that, um, there was fairly clear direction, I think, on, on, uh, the, the preference for how to, how to implement the plan. And then we had an action plan that was, um, prepared over the course of the fall and approved with our committee. Uh, over the course of the fall, and we've been doing a series of, of council presentations, uh, most of them before Christmas. This is the number five out of the six, so they're almost all complete. And I think at this point, uh, the goal is not, so we're not asking for anything. The, we're just, uh, presenting the results of the, um, of the initiative. So I'll pass it over to Darcy to take us through, uh, some of the results.
Thank you, Jamie, and it's nice to see everyone again. I know, uh, my first, uh, venture into the project, um, was in Red Cliff, so it's nice to see you again. Uh, as Jamie mentioned, the first part of the project was around the economic base analysis. Um, and this included an analysis of some relevant socioeconomic indicators, and this helped us to identify key patterns of change and trends in Southeast Alberta. Some of the key findings for the region included an older population compared to the province with little population growth and modest net migration in the recent years. And while housing costs are lower than in comparable regions, this low population growth means that there's been less new housing development over the last decade. Jamie mentioned some of this consultation and engagement already. Um, we did, uh, six in-person sessions for the community workshops in the beginning of the project. We did a pretty in-depth service delivery review and those two summits that Jamie, uh, already mentioned, the first one with fifty-four participants and the second one with thirty-five participants. So understanding what was already in place was essential to ensuring that we focused on regional opportunities that we can leverage, um, with what's already in place and not to duplicate things. Uh, it's also an opportunity to identify any gaps or overlaps that could be addressed by some of the existing organizations in the region. And through our conversations with service providers, we identified opportunities for regional collaboration across six functional areas listed on the screen here. So advocacy, investment, attraction, entrepreneurship and innovation, tourism, development and marketing, business retention and expansion, and workforce development. So identified through consultation, the strategic priorities for regional collaboration, uh, include those that are recognized as both foundational to the success of all other priorities and those related to the sectors that offer the highest potential for growth, economic diversification and prosperity. So the foundational priorities are those that are essential to economic growth and diversification in Southeast Alberta, influencing the potential for all of the sectors. Regional collaboration in these two priority areas will leverage and support the ongoing efforts of existing economic development service providers. And initiatives related to these priorities might not easily fit within the mandate or resources of the individual service providers, uh, but are well suited to a regional approach. By concentrating regional efforts and resources on the sectors with the greatest potential to drive regional prosperity and growth, Southeast Alberta can maximize the employment and investment benefits that they offer. And identified through economic analysis and regional engagements, three high potential sectors were identified aerospace deep and defense, agriculture and agrifood and tourism. So the action plan that was put together identifies seventeen initiatives that align to these five priority areas. Their ambitious actions that would not likely be achievable without regional collaboration. The development of this strategy was informed by input engagement of dozens of service providers, business leaders, elected officials, educators and industry stakeholders. Their experience and enthusiasm are needed to carry out as many, uh, of the regional initiatives, um, that are recommended here. With that, I'm gonna pass it back to Jamie and he can take you through the implementation framework, which really dives into the on-the-ground details of how this might work.
Great, thanks, Darcy. So I'll pick this up at the second summit. This is the one at the end of August. And at this point, we had decided what the priorities were going to be. So the, the key issue was how was the region going to collaborate and work together? How are you going to make decisions? How are you going to measure progress on the initiative? All of those factors. So we went through some exercises in this session, looking, uh, starting at a very wide lens that, that some of the major global disruption happening in the regional economy. Talked about how those influenced, uh, events in Southeast Alberta and your individual communities. Uh, the tables, uh, came up with some project ideas within each of the subject areas. And we talked about some different framework options, um, starting with, um, the most formal, which would be a new, uh, a new funded organization to the most informal, which would be a loose partnership, um, of the six municipalities acting in more of a, more of an ad hoc project by project basis. And we arrived at, uh, at a balance of that going forward that, uh, that I will talk about. Um, some of the key factors that we had to, um, to consider was, um, not only the strategy, but the governance. So how, how to make decisions? Who's going to be in charge of the initiative? Uh, what's the organizational structure? Will it be something new? Will it be ruled in or managed through existing organizations? And then, uh, a key factor is how do you measure and report on the result of your initiative to make sure that it's, it's working for everyone and everyone is getting value for what they're putting into it. Um, so these are some of the results of those discussions. Um, the consensus was we want to maintain the core partnership of the six local governments. And it would be done through, uh, a renewed terms of reference document, uh, but there would not be a new, uh, separate organization created. The, the thought was there's already a lot of organizations involved in economic development in some way in Southeast Alberta. We didn't want to create yet another. Uh, we wanted to, to maintain the partnership of the local governments as the core, and then they would work with those existing organizations to, to implement the plan. So, um, within each of the, uh, the five priority areas, Darcy mentioned, there were the seventeen major, um, action items or major initiatives. And for each of those, there would be a key organization identified that would take the lead. So the, the six municipalities would, would remain, uh, in control. But in terms of actually implementing and doing the work, we, uh, there would be a, a key organization or, or several organizations identified to, um, to actually implement, either using some of their existing resources, their existing staff, or possibly bringing on contractors or, or temporary help for, for the projects. In order to, sorry, just one, just back one second, Darcy. So there would be, for each of the initiatives, a working group established. So it's, the idea is the six municipal, the six local governments would be in charge, but they're not experts in each of the, each of the topic areas. So for each of the major initiatives, there would be a working group created with four to six individuals that are, have greater expertise in whatever the, whatever the topic would be for that initiative. On the financial side of things, there would be an annual contribution amount for each of the partner municipalities. And I'm going to walk through some of the, some of the options for that funding model. But the key thing that I'm going to talk about as well is that this is just the starting point. And in terms of the total spending, the municipal contribution is relatively small. But working as a region allows you to leverage and access a greater amount of grant funding. The plan costed out over five years is quite substantial. This is, this is sort of a best case scenario, assuming everything comes together and the, the anticipated grant funding would be received. But the total, the total spending over five years would be getting close to a million dollars, over $900,000. But the key thing here is this is, this is based on a municipal contribution of 60,000 per year. The rest of it would be leveraged through grant funding for each, each initiative. You can never count on the money until you have it in the bank. But based on initial discussions with representatives at the provincial level in Alberta, as well as the federal government through Prairies Can, there, there is a sense that the 60,000 municipal, informally at least, there's, there's an expectation that the province would match that for year one implementation. And with 120,000 from Alberta, there's an anticipation that the federal government would match that, another 120. So the 60,000 local government contribution would, would quickly be 240,000 for year one implementation. So just some of the options that we discussed for funding. One option, of course, would be an equal split, $10,000 for each of the partners. The, the idea is that the level, the size and the ability to pay is varies quite a lot. So that would not be a fair way to do it. We could do it based on non-residential assessment. So in terms of the industrial, commercial tax base, if we did it on that basis, Cypress County actually has about half or just over half of the entire region. Medicine Hat, another 35%, Redcliffe would only be 3% if we did it on that basis. And I should say, this is, this is assuming there'd be a base contribution of 2,000. The rest of it would be proportional. If we did it based on population, Medicine Hat is obviously by far the largest, over three quarters of the population. So they would be paying close to two thirds of the total. So after discussing some of these options with the committee, the decision was made to, and this is not final, this will have to be approved once, once the, the actual implementation committee is in place. But the idea is to create a weighted formula that includes both assessment and population, essentially to, to cause Cypress County and Medicine Hat to have the same. So they'd be both be paying about 23,000, so both, both paying just over a third. Redcliffe's contribution would be 3,800, so about 6% of the total. I won't go through these in detail, but just to make the point that for each of the initiatives in the plan, there are performance measures attached to those of different types. It's very important in economic development to, to track what you're putting into an initiative and what the results are that you're hoping to, to get out of it. So this is also set up in the plan. And so next steps, early in 2025, there is some work ongoing with establishing the terms of reference for that, that committee of the six local governments. Once that is in place, I believe they will be confirming financial commitments to meet to the six partners and then deciding which initiatives they'll be implementing first and identifying which other organizations they will partner with and who will take the lead on some of those initiatives. And of course, applying for some of that funding to make sure that what we anticipate will actually, will actually be realized this year. And then activating the working groups, once the funding's in place, to get those four or six key experts in each, in each topic area. Oh, that's it. I guess I would just conclude by saying that it was a really great project for us to work on. There's a lot of, a lot of interest. It seemed like coming out of COVID, some of the meetings that we had, there was so much enthusiasm for people in the region to get together. So there was a lot of excitement to, to collaborate. But we want to do it in a smart way by not creating something new, not, not, not spending money or creating, you know, new overhead, but, but being really focused on specific initiatives that work for everyone to some degree and create benefits for all at a relatively affordable price for each, each government. And that's it. So happy, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions? Turn them on. Well, right now, we're not seeing a whole bunch of questions. So I guess you went over it quite quickly, but we've had, because unfortunately, last meeting, you didn't get to be here, so we've had two chances to read this. So I think hopefully everybody's read it and maybe even refreshed themselves. So who haven't you done yet?
Medicine Hat is the last one. They were also postponed for some reason. I can't remember why, from before Christmas to January.
And what kind of a feeling did you get when you did Cypress County?
We did not do it. There's two teams of us doing it. The other, Paul and Rebecca, were actually did Cypress County. We've only done Foremost and, and Forty Mile.
Which were both pretty positive.
And my understanding is Boyland has, they've had theirs and they are proceeding with it as well. We're confirming our commitment. Cypress County, they did receive it for information at their last meeting. But my understanding is that they will be discussing it at their next week. And then, yes, the city of Wisconsin as well.
Well, it's just because they have, by that funding formula, they, they are the most interested parties per se. So I could see where that might cause some angst. The, the smaller communities basically were getting off reasonably lucky, if you want to say that.
Well, any, any funding model didn't really change too much for us.
No, because we're small on whatever level.
Well, except for the six ways.
Yeah.
Except for the six ways to let, yeah.
Yeah, the $10,000 each. Even that, but that's.
Are you getting any indication on which funding model was most favorable from the other communities? Um, I think you're right. What I did hear is that Cypress County did have the most questions about that, which, you know, I think that does make sense as you pointed out. So I, I mean, generally speaking, I don't think there was a lot of discussion or, or feedback on that. But so maybe there will have to be a little bit of tweaking in the final version that goes ahead. But hasn't been a lot of discussion of the funding. Yeah, I can see Cypress being the only one with an issue on that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of the actual proposal?
I just wanted to comment that the report in the full strategy is in there, in the package as well. And then we also included the framework considerations where you'll see the, for the working groups.
Well, if nobody has any questions, I guess I would like to thank you for your presentation tonight. And, and we will give this some thought. And hopefully things will keep moving along with a regional look at economic development.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Got here, got here.
Good evening.
Do we want to move this for information or do you want to just leave it to the motions?
So I, I did have a suggested motion in there just to receive it for information and then to.
Discuss it further?
Authorize us to participate.
All right. So let's have the receive it for information, Larry. Any, nobody had questions, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And then the five-year commitment, or at least a one-year commitment to carry this forward or not? What's everybody's flavor?
I thought that.
We need a motion.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we participate. I thought that after that last summit, the, this all just kind of went by the wayside. It was, nobody was really in favor of what they were selling, is the report, the report you brought back.
Well, what happened was they, the last question of the day was, what do you see the future being? And you were to rate how active an economic development group would be. And the table we were at actually went strong on it and, and a lot of other tables didn't. So this, it, it was almost like a loose organization. Nobody said no to it. They just wanted loose. Now, there is some, there are some, there were some players in that summit, like Verge, Onderkord, Apex. All those groups are already, they're already thinking they're doing it. And so they don't really want more players in the game because that might affect their wagon. And, and that's almost what I got out of it from some of the people that were there. Like, there was, they were already, oh, well, we're already doing this and this and this. And we'd rather keep our little silo, silo because they get their little funding.
Yeah. Well, when they were talking about funding for Prairies Can, that's where Onderkord gets their funding from.
I know. So they're not really in favor of competition, their funding.
This guy basically said they're not reinventing the wheel.
No.
They're not doing something different.
Right now, we have all these little groups and they're all doing their own little sideline. This is a best fit. This is, this is all supposed to be everybody working together. Yeah, Onderkord has been here for years, like 30 some years, right? Apex has been here for at least 15.
And Verge has been here for a long time.
Because they had a different name even.
Yeah.
With all those, none of them want to all of a sudden be this.
Yes.
And that's where sometimes these working groups for experts, then maybe they will have something to bring to the table like in a working group, but not as a, as a whole. Bounded ED.
A lot of both groups were also approached for any sort of financial commitment to this. They're approaching this.
Right, because they wouldn't probably.
They do have, if you look on that pitch summary, they're for the working groups. And so that Onderkord is in there.
And the chamber was there. There were lots of people there, all players in economic development, but not.
And that they want to pull in and use up these working groups and, and moving this.
They, they might come in as experts, but they're not coming in as we should all work together. That was my takeaway from that meeting was.
I mean, I guess depending on what the financial commitment is, but if we're, say, $4,000 in five years, that's 20 grand. That's not a huge, because he was talking five-year plan, I believe.
Yeah, with a five-year plan. So that's also relying on, unfortunately.
Oh, heavy grant funding.
Crazy grant funding.
Very heavy, 100%. But if that's all we were committing to, like if we were making a financial commitment of, say, for just rough for easy math, $4,000, it's 20 grand. Does it help economic development? Who knows? But could it help economic development? Hopefully. And it's a very small price to pay to potentially.
Before granted, hate to miss out on the opportunity to leave one of the players. And also, I can't help but think about that rural renewal committee that I'm on, that we committed probably twice as much money to. It's attracting maybe seven or eight jobs to Redcliffe where this could trump that for half the money. Well, I'd slip in the Trudeau word there, but.
Well, on the other hand, we, we just let. Right?
Yes.
We've left Verge as well. Yep. And the reason, I don't think.
Isn't Verge pet?
No, 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 totally separate things.
Okay.
We were paying. It's a solid, that's, that's a whole great big region.
But more than.
They searched me something before. Verge is the same as something.
Oh. I don't really.
Well, she's not on that anymore.
Well, I think we voted to not stay with it in this year's budget.
How did you know?
That wasn't, we know.
No, that was. We're still doing that.
We're hosting.
I mean, we're hosting the next meeting, but you got to get six months or something.
I don't remember voting on leaving that. I remember rural renewal.
Good. All right. It was like throwing me for. Well, no, you just have one last meeting to go to in four months. But anyway. Anybody else have any feelings on, on this?
I think it's a good idea for the price of pain.
Low risk possible, high reward.
Yes.
Now, are we making a five-year commitment or are we making a one-year commitment?
Well, it's everyone else's. I don't think a one-year commitment would be viable.
Maybe not. Or are we making a commitment contingent on grant funding?
Well, we can, we can say.
We're being an idea.
No, we don't know the number yet.
The individual projects will be contingent to grant funding unless they come back and ask you to municipalities if they want to contribute more and that's their product. But right now, the contribution is 60,000 split between the municipalities based on the weighted recommendation.
And that gets what?
Well, it's in there. What does first year must be doing?
Yeah, well, they have $240,000 in there. And, oh, I see.
Yeah, they, they say what their plan is each year. And then supposedly there's matrix to measure if it's working or not. Again, because that's always the hardest part. And I know.
There's space in the fence right there.
And I totally think that that's more realistic here. Like, we left Ag a long time ago and tried to bring it back. Even when you read about the peas where Lethbridge is building a big plant and, and Red Deer is building a big plant, well, it's a little bit late in the game for us to all of a sudden build a plant. Like, we, we left that a long time ago because, you know, we had oil and gas, so who needed Ag? Now we don't have oil and gas and, you know, it's just hard to claw your way back into a game. But other people are many years ahead of you on. That's, that's where we sit right now.
We are the drone capital.
I mean.
Drone city, sorry.
Yeah.
No, that's by us now. We won't, sorry.
But even that, like, we, we have this drone and aerospace technology that's in infancy stage here. But if you read through that, like quote, it's got over 80% of the Canadian aerospace.
Yes.
Technology and, and research and development. So again, we have to, we have to keep working on what we have.
Yeah.
And grow it versus, otherwise it will leave. Like, they're probably already trying to look for these guys there. The announcement, the announcement of the base doing a new lab, that's kind of nice. Is that a real thing? I thought I read it. $970 million? Well, that was 750.
750.
The Nanosciences, will they?
Building the whole new lab instead of.
Oh, yeah.
Keep.
I heard rumors.
But it was, well, they were announcing it for 2027 to 2032, the build somewhere.
Because they put out, yeah, they put out notice of vote a year ago.
Yeah. Anyway, so.
Canadian side.
Canadian side. Yeah, so.
The British side is done.
Basically a replacement for the building, you think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Technically.
Yeah.
Other than the rattlesnake.
You say the replacement for building one.
That's, that's already their lab. It's been there since the 19th, I think.
Okay. Well, who the monkeys are?
What? Where the monkeys are?
No, that's 99.
They really do have them out there?
We're live.
You're the one saying it.
You asked.
In addition to the financial contribution, there will be some staff resourcing as well. Depending on the waiting information.
Have the staff resourcing to do it?
They already recognize that resourcing is limited, but there will be some commitment from us. Like any of them, same with. Like any of them, same with Cool Island.
Who's our ED person?
It's a shared responsibility right now. So we have Brian doing some myself.
Good. All discussion is done. Call for the vote. All in favor, opposed, and is carried.
Those receive for information.
No, that was James' motion to.
To, oh, yes.
To try to participate, see how far that goes. Because it's, it's a moving target, like if the grant funding doesn't come in, the odds could be totally different amount.
Are you gonna, sorry, are you gonna come back to us with a real dollar number once all that gets hashed out or?
If there's any change, right now, what is being recommended was that weighted recommendation?
Yeah.
On your orders. Yeah. I have another meeting on the twenty third, so we'll get a further update then. We'll find out what county did, what cities responded.
About thirty eight hundred dollars plus to two thousand dollar base.
That's what he said, but when I was adding up those numbers, they almost added up to sixty thousand. Because St. Bruce and Madison app were each in at twenty two something, so that was forty four. And then there was five thousand dollars plus in another one, so.
Well, it's three percent, three percent of sixty thousand, eighteen, I know, it was the two thousand.
Yeah.
Thousand eleven ninety and six hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty.
All right, so we're all the way to bylaw number nineteen eighty one slash two thousand and five being the supplementary assessment bylaw. It's here for all three readings tonight.
First reading.
Kathy, something we do every year. Picks up people that Bill finished halfway through the year, which just happens to be a whole bunch of houses, right, Brian?
Or if they're not what they just had, they pretty much said that we're stopping.
We had about six of them this year.
Yeah.
So Kathy moved for first reading.
As well, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Both ways. All in favor, first reading, opposed, Gary, somebody like to move it for second, Jim? Yeah. Any, any discussion? All in favor, opposed, is carried, would somebody like to move it be presented for third? Matt? Must be unanimous. All in favor. Opposed, and it is carried unanimously, and would somebody like to move third?
Bye.
Chris. Any questions or concerns? All in favor, opposed, that is carried. All right, moving on for requests for decisions. We have a request to waive the utility penalty.
I'll make a motion that we just received.
James. Spelt his name wrong.
What else? Any argument, but.
If you're wearing your hat, I could have.
Well, you complain about.
I do like complain about that. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Let's hear it. And who wants to get reelected?
But a seven dollars.
It's such a small amount.
You get, you get your bill every two months.
I agree, they should have known it, I agree. However, sometimes we have to play to the weakest in society. And is this really worth a fight over for a couple bucks?
Did you figure this is then?
I'm on a bad grade.
Well, on the other hand, nobody's bills came in. So are you telling me that nobody paid any of their bills and they looked at their bank account and said, man, I can afford to go out tonight?
I get my bill, because I get my bill every two months.
I agree.
It's your responsibility. Twelve thousand dollars.
Well, but that's the funny part. If you read in there, a whole bunch of those delinquent are carryover. There was five hundred and some the period before when they actually got the mail. So this time there was really only an extra two hundred and some. So to waive all seven hundred is actually unfair to the taxpayers because we have repeat offenders involved here.
Yes, and so too.
Yeah. And you too, yes. Kathy.
The way I look at it, everybody knew there was a postal strike. It was on the town sign for weeks about postal strike, pay your bills. It was on social media, both the town site and on the Red Cliff whatever sites.
And there's the billing.
Yeah.
And not just our bills.
Yeah.
Well, other companies had, hey, pay your bills this way.
Yeah.
There's a strike on.
There was even a, you know, they could have, when is my bill called the office, when's my bill due? So it's not washing with me.
I think the city, I had to phone them twice, because two of my bills never, I don't think they've got to me yet, they're in some ways done.
Oh, we got. You can't just log in?
Where?
The city.
Online to me.
The city, not just phone.
Oh, I just log in.
Yeah.
Get on the email.
There's the classifieds, so you can get it.
Well, that would be a good idea.
They phoned him and said, ask them how many cases they have.
Here I had to get them to email. I don't know if they took my three bucks off either.
I did.
I don't think they did.
Yeah, that was a great selling feature, save a dollar a month.
And the city doesn't give you any discount, so I just said, well, then keep sending me paper.
That's fine, so I'm gonna burn a tree because you won't give me a discount.
No, you had me buy a stamp.
Yeah, and stamps are good.
Well, you, anyway, long story short, I. I don't know how people function.
It's not trying to get reelected.
I just don't know how you can forget all your bills because they didn't come in the mail.
Yeah, but that's the way society is, out of sight, out of mind.
Well, what did you do for your credit card bills that didn't come in the mail?
That was going to be my next question, should we take credit cards away from people then too, like how much?
Do you think all the credit card companies waive the interest fees?
No, of course not.
No, thank you, Chris.
All the insurance companies did was they, they didn't waive any fees, but they just did not cancel anybody's insurance. That was it, you still had to pay your fees and all that stuff.
I just think it's a small amount of money that to cause a headache over. I'd be in favor just for that one period, waiving those fees.
Yes. Thank you, Chris. Anybody else have questions or concerns? All in favor of receiving for information? Ballist.
Here, this is my arrow camping.
You're right. It is January.
Are you gonna die on that hill?
So.
It's over.
Red Cliff. Twenty twenty four, what it seems. I think two.
Well, we have to make a positive motion, so I'll make a positive motion to approve that we waive it. But how?
Does it? Sorry.
Wait, you're two.
James.
Yeah, M D S.
Okay, any questions or concerns?
So. It, it, from twenty five two to twenty twenty three, significant jump, almost doubled. And then from twenty two three to twenty twenty four, it didn't almost double, but another significant jump. Our fees haven't gone up that much, so like, why are we seeing so much extra?
The expanded usage.
Well, look at the one billing period, it's like somebody forgot to turn the water off.
Well, yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was insinuating, about saying someone leave the tab on like a thousand dollars for one, two months.
Maybe if we would have paid at least half of it, it would be a little bit more conscientious as to how much.
Usually comes to us somehow their expenses are more than what they make.
Well, they.
Or it equals pretty close.
When this thing first started out and it was five, six hundred dollars for water. They, they, they don't charge near enough, right? Like at last year's billing, if they should be, it's fifty bucks a plot just for water. And they're only charging thirty, and then they're going around and buying garden tools and things like that. Like these people can't even come with their own garden tools to garden their little patch.
Yeah.
What I think hap, like at eight hundred and seventy five cubic meters, that's more than I use on my yard. And I have more yard than community garden. So I think somebody grossly overwatered. And I think what Jim said is something that we should be informing them about coming up. Like they need to start paying a portion of this, so they're a little more observant of what they're doing.
Yeah.
Because it's waiving it every year that gives them no incentive at all. Twenty five, twenty four plots, twenty five plots, one trade. Why should the taxpayers be forking over a thousand dollars in water bills?
Yeah.
For twenty five people to have a little fifteen by twenty five.
And a lot of them are from Madison.
I don't even care where they're from, I'm just going like, yeah.
Well, why not? I, I do.
And for them to only charge out thirty dollars a plot, I think they have to, that nobody can run a business that way. So.
Not that we are a business, so it's charging this thirty dollars upon the town.
No, whoever's running this group.
We are.
That's what I thought.
We run this group.
Run by F C S S.
Yes.
That's what it says on the water bills, because the bills go to the town, right, close to F C S S.
Well.
Then we have to shape up.
I think, I think there's, this is an inherent broken system. Yeah, when, when it was four, five hundred dollars, it's okay. But now that it's, they've managed to break over a thousand dollars this year, that's not right.
No, it's, it's not.
Yeah.
So we're the ones that are providing the tools and the top soil and. Unplussed.
It, it's all, it, it would come from an F C S S budget line item.
So the information Melody gave me today is that there's twenty two plots that are registered, only one of them is mess on address, and that three of them are still open.
Yeah, that's what it says that this year for one place, it says there's four people on a waiting list. Another place it says they, they haven't all been booked this year. Yeah. But I, I just don't understand. So who is paying this? Is this taxpayers paying this or F C S S paying this? Because if it's F C S S, it's only twenty percent taxpayer.
It comes through F C S S.
Yeah, it does.
Even the water bill?
So F C S S is paying this on an eighty twenty split, because that's what F C S S money is.
No, I understand that, but.
The thing is, we can use the F C S S money for other things.
In some ways, you're absolutely right, and in other ways, some years we struggle to find.
Places to use.
Places to use it because there are certain guidelines that it has to fall into. And so much has to be culture and so much has to be recreation. I haven't, I don't know what this one is. It possibly is culture, because that's the one we struggle the most with, right? And you could grow something that's called culture.
It's agriculture.
Paul's boy. They were waiving the fees, is that money really coming from F C S S or are we just charging it back to the users?
By us not billing them, then F C S S is paying the bill.
Case we're not truly waiving.
You're right.
Is that correct?
You said it.
If we waive it.
Yeah.
We're not getting any money for it.
Correct.
And that's always been the word that we've used is we're waiving. So is F C S S really writing us a check for it?
No.
Okay, so then we really are, we are, we're, we're absorbing that cost.
So the, the town then loses the revenue on the water side also, because it's essentially just like an entry that the expense and the revenue cancel each other out, and we're just reversing those.
So then maybe we shouldn't waive it and charge F C S S.
We could keep it, yeah.
But through the chair, I, I support this project, I, I think it's, I think water has went up and. It was a dry year.
It's still like.
Very wet.
That's.
It was a wet year.
We had all the rain in the spring there, that we were talking flood, that we were talking drought, it never happened. And and like you say, eight hundred and seventy five cubic meters is crazy.
Especially.
For the size of that garden. Two hundred and nineteen gallons to a cubic meter, so there's, that's almost twenty thousand gallons went onto a garden patch.
Because I. My yard is bigger than the community garden, and we didn't use nearly that much water. I looked at this and thought, oh, do we have a leak somewhere? This is unreal. It must have been running it overnight days on end.
Why would you even do that?
Exactly.
I don't know. It, I just think that I, I don't mind giving them some assistance, but I, I don't think it should be at this kind of rate. We shouldn't keep giving it out for free. Maybe they need to charge fifty dollars a plot. And pay half the water bill or something like. If it's not a viable thing, I don't know what, what the goal is. We have, I don't know who runs over there and gardens their little plot.
Well, as we know, community services don't need to be viable financially, because we wouldn't have a pool, we wouldn't have a rectangle. But you're right, this just feels like we're being taken advantage of, because they don't care. Although I struggle to find any reason using that much water on a garden patch.
Well, that was just one billing period, like there's three, there's three billing periods here.
Did anybody ask why it was so hard that one time?
We were looking into it operationally, but I don't have any additional information yet today.
That does seem like a broken water line somewhere, but you didn't see it.
Or big leak, something.
If you'd like to table this to get your meeting.
Well, what we thought now is that we're dealing with something from last year now.
Yes.
That's the problem, like, we're almost committed to waiving this, this previous year's fee. But I think going forward, we need to give them a heads up that things have to change. Well, Matt, if that much water was leaking somewhere, you'd think you'd see it, you would, somebody would sink in it. Well, and you know, it's in the back alley there.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I walk my, down the alley all the time, and I didn't see anything.
I, I just don't understand. Like they used over a thousand cubes through the course of the summer. That's just a lot of gallons of water.
Well, why couldn't we send the bill to F C S S?
We could, but it's last year's, we're up, Mike's done those books. For that, screw you over. Really? I would prefer a motion tonight as opposed to tabling it future, because then we, then we are pushing that to previous year adjustment, if we're going to waive it. Um, I would also maybe suggest if you wanted to set a cap for twenty twenty five. So you would approve this right off, if that's what you wanted to do, and then say we would approve. We, we will, we will waive five hundred dollars. Yeah, whatever. Twenty twenty five. Yeah, whatever that would be. Over and above that, they're paying it themselves. Yeah.
How would you collect that money?
July. Through F C S S or if somebody has to work, run. And then that might spur the, the, the following year's rates to go up to cover that additional cost.
Well, if they went up to fifty dollars a plot.
Vegetables have gone up at the store. And and that, right, that's the other problem is that they're already sold for twenty twenty five, so they're sold it. Except for three. Except for three, right? So we've sold them all at thirty bucks, so we're going to be in the same boat in twenty twenty five, collected enough to pick the water, so. But then F C S S would be, they would know at least that they owe money. Yeah. And know what to expect for the year's.
People, how about, I will amend my motion to approve um, the waiving of the watering costs and additionally set a cap for twenty twenty five of a maximum of five hundred dollars a water.
Waive twenty twenty four. And.
Twenty twenty five, five hundred dollars.
Twenty twenty five, that's five hundred.
Have we advertised that they can have the gardens again this year for thirty dollars?
Well, like, they're already, twenty three of them are already, twenty two of them are already sold at thirty dollars.
Oh, okay.
You can get one, three one.
Italian house on.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm sure everybody's clear. That's a pretty good deal.
Are you clear? Any questions related to the motion? A will be. All in favor? Opposed? Let's carry it. Hey, policies. Policy number zero seven zero sidewalk inspection and maintenance review for consideration. No changes. I think it's just here for, as a refresh in case some of us forgot how we do that. Matt?
It's now, could be it's time to change the priority.
Well, the, the new mayor will, his street will then make to a B.
This is a sidewalk. Why'd you even say somebody's there, guys? Or is this sidewalk and roadway or just?
No, just sidewalks.
We have sidewalks all the way up to Full Street, Philadelphia.
Right, in those little cul-de-sans, listen. And yes, no.
Well, we knew this. So, I think you can walk all the way to the Grand Union.
No, 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 north of the highway.
Uh.
I thought that was all.
No, there's none up there.
Yeah, well, it says there is. Says there's all the way up the platinum. I think that's platinum, isn't it?
I don't think there's sidewalks out there. The last hydrant is at Tecmation.
Anyways, it doesn't matter. I don't, I didn't think there was sidewalks down the old Trans Canada Highway either. People wanted us to repay there this year.
No, there isn't.
I just drove down high road.
Yeah.
So maybe we need to amend our pillory on our map.
I wouldn't recommend. I wouldn't recommend changing it. They take into consideration the entire town and future growth. The categories work as they are. And i- if in the future you do add, that is covered already.
But it's not accurate.
But it brings us around the entire town. Right? So when we do go out, we're inspect, as we're even looking at sidewalks, we're inspecting absolutely everything. On foot.
On foot?
We go by foot.
It's not a road that doesn't have sidewalks.
Uh, not the ones without the sidewalks, but we'll drive that in our light duty vehicles.
Oh.
So Bonnie, if you were trying to find it, it's page two hundred and seventy-three, isn't it?
Dollars.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
It's page seven. It's weird.
Anyway. Not much has changed. Yeah. All in favor for giving it, for information, opposed, carried? Great. Moving on to other land use bylaw amendment for information.
Think how we added in, uh.
Questions or concerns?
Any else? Definition? So.
We can just ask Brian to come and speak to this?
Okay, Brian.
Only reason he's here, probably.
Probably.
In that beautiful picture. I think currently it's acceptable.
So this is not a problem.
You gonna see him to mine last?
I think he might did. For the record, that was Matt's idea.
Have you figured it was? He kind of his that way in.
Well, with that here, good.
But you don't even want to go there. I would let him where to have.
Hey, Brian?
Um, like your shirt.
Thank you. Uh, in, in October of twenty twenty-three, council did pass the land use bylaw. If the land use bylaw is, is a living document, it will change as our needs and priorities um do evolve and, and grow as, with community needs. However, just during daily use, um, we have noticed that there's, there are, we've identified several minor areas primarily just related to some formatting and spelling and uh, mistakes there that we have found. And then September of this last year, council did direct administration to clarify about population density of which we have discussed before there. Um, so we have come up with some minor changes and tweaks um, that we would like to see updated in the land use bylaw. Um, we're just bringing this to council just to make sure that it, it does fit with council's priority and direction. Um, following on the chart there, we do have just what we've noted, um, as minor changes and, and errors and omissions that we have seen just by using the land use bylaw. Um, and as well as, as aligning with council's direction for population density. So during first reading, we will bring our red line of the bylaws. So you will be aware of where it is. But we're just trying to make sure that we, we have gotten the direction that council wants before we present it to our municipal planning commission and bring it back to council for first reading. So I can go through all these different lines, um, if you wish.
If there's any questions that come up as you look through this?
Just, just if I can highlight a couple, um, maximum sign dimensions, um, just in the C highway and industrial areas. We do recommend changing it currently to six square meters, which restably is about sixty-four square feet. Um, and we do recommend changing it to a hundred and seven square feet, which is ten meters squared, which is in alignment with City of Medicine Hat. And if you look at the signs that are there now currently, U-Haul, uh, Co-ops, Burger Kings are all greater than, they're right around that hundred to a hundred and twenty square feet right now. So if we're not opposed to them, that, that is what we'd like to see, is it actually shrunk from what we had in last land use by law.
And a lot of those, they actually came through oversized signs. Like I remember U-Haul actually came to S D A V for a bigger sign. Yeah, I say it was so far off the road, they wanted.
So if, if memory serves me correctly, they were like a hundred and thirty-two square feet and we only allowed a hundred square feet. Um, we did ask there in the, uh, our medium, just to switch some stuff around, like um, because our medium is already a medium density, we do think that duplex and semi-detached dwellings should become more of a permitted use in that district, whereas apartments and, and multi-unit should go over to discretionary from permitted uses. Again, just so we're getting a bit more insight and we're getting a bit more community engagement. In the, uh, medium, um, residential business district, we do recommend adding in those density populations which um, are missing currently. So having the, the population density for a multifamily to be at that maximum sixty units per hectare. And then again, apartments to be have the, uh, floor level of that seventy. Currently, we do not have that. So we do get some, we have a little bit too much density. The potential is there. Um, and I think that's just about it. Uh, under H Gen, which is our horticultural, we don't have a maximum site coverage for um, greenhouses. All that it does say in land use bylaw is maximum site coverage is forty-five percent. Which any greenhouse is covers. The old land use bylaw was a hundred percent, provided you met all your other requirements. So we're looking for something a little bit more into that. It's forty-five percent isn't nearly enough coverage for a site. And then setbacks under H Gen and then just, uh, clarifying, uh, definition of greenhouse.
So all that you're asking for is you want to incorporate all of these into the land use bylaw. So when we're looking at it to change those numbers, then we're going to basically change all of these and any selling errors that you found.
Correct. Yeah. As, as one big, um, lack of red, we're just as a lump of bylaw amendment, um, just as more of a yearly updating, just to change some there. So we still will have to ultimately do another land use bylaw amendment. When we start talking about aligning with like the north side with the three municipalities, but that should be a separate bylaw amendment. Um, just because it is such a big and important bylaw.
And, and this is still big enough that we'll have to give it first reading and then have a public.
The land use bylaw is a statutory document.
Right. So every time we do it, we have to go through the whole process.
Yeah.
A month and an open house and then.
I wouldn't necessarily say that we would need an open house for this as we're not really.
Public hearing.
A public hearing for sure, but not necessarily an open house.
Okay.
Because we're really just more clarifying some stuff there.
Okay.
Not really changing anything. Like when we start doing for the north side, uh, to align with the three municipalities, I would highly recommend doing it. House just to make sure that, that anyone of concern in those developers and private property owners are made aware of what's happening. But in this case, we're really just doing a little bit of changes and not tweaking more than anything else, maybe introducing any nature into it.
You're talking about when you, K-Rox, seeing the North Side, I think about that. Well, we were just talking about the heavy industrial.
Yeah, correct. Yes. I would say this is somewhat similar to that, uh, when we do a land use bylaw amendment for rezoning. We don't, we don't hold open houses for those.
Okay. Got it?
Just a thought with greenhouses. I know some of the ones that recently have built out in, out in the county. They've, uh, added into development about some screening to reduce light pollution. Is that something we want to take into consideration?
We definitely can add that in specifically. Um, we do have in, um, in the land use bylaw right now, it says, um, no lights can project onto any adjacent property. So which would cover.
I'm really the first to fly routes in my career, so.
No, but still, if you happen to live right next to a bright light all night, it might affect.
Very annoying, yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or you get calls in the middle of the night because there's nice fog and somebody thinks the town's on fire.
But yeah, I mean, right now, like if you're talking about like having, um, grow lights in, in a greenhouse, we wouldn't allow that under our land use bylaw currently. Under the lighting section. Now, I mean, we could provide specific rules in the greenhouse section if council did want. But it is sort of not allowed to be under our lighting section.
I do think it is covered off and that's probably why nobody's doing it. Like there, you don't have a bunch of people keeping their lights on all the time.
Right.
Two years ago.
Yeah, it might be something for the future.
There might be years ago when they were propagating their own plants, they might have one house with lights on.
Yeah, that's what we would do.
Yeah.
Down there, I think there's buying seed.
Yeah, everybody's buying shit. Well, isn't that what Aurora's supposed to suddenly be doing?
Oh, is that what they're gonna be doing? Well, they're already doing it.
Yeah, so. Yeah.
I don't saw the lights. I don't know if they're running lights, but they're using the greenhouse with thirty.
Yeah, yeah, because they apply for a tax exemption.
Reach there.
No, I thought they were growing plants or greenhouses, but I don't know, just rumors though.
Yeah, well, plants or greenhouses could be trees.
Yes, they do grow them.
I thought I heard flowers.
If I speak to you? Anything else you want to add? Is there anything else you want to add? Well, I think the biggest reason why we are here is because those dwelling units and we did have, that's the mode I'm hoping we're all understanding and.
Yeah, assuming all that comes under what we've already talked about.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, adding in the, the floors for apartments and then actually adding in the, those uh, maximum and, and minimum densities will be added into the, uh, our, our, uh, uh, medium residential business district.
Yeah, and I see some discretionary use.
Great.
But it's just a thought for the greenhouse definition. Would it make sense to add to it for agricultural use so we don't run into the problem that we had? Because the way I'm reading this right now is I can build a greenhouse, glass or transparent material and use it as a shop. But he's growing plants on the walls of it. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is.
So that'd be the way, what I just said, then.
I mean, definitely add that in if that's what possible.
I don't disagree with you, but there's always loophole, right? Yeah, and I'm just trying to close a loophole, but that's maybe just getting around that. Because that was presented at the S D A B hearing. Because then what would satisfy for agriculture use is one plant, agriculture use, I guess. How specific would we need to get into it?
What a primary u- primary use, primarily use for.
Yeah, there we go. But it could primarily use for that, and then in the wintertime, parks might be in there.
Uh, I think that's not. If it, if, if the definition was for food production or something like that, that, that would, even if you had something parked in there for off-season, you, you would still have to go back to growing. But then you have to have somebody policing it all the time to, so it's, it becomes a really big issue.
Well, you don't need somebody policing it, but if it comes up that, hey, this guy's obviously trying to pull the wool over our eyes, then you can reference back to it.
So what do you call the shells that have the haunted house every year? What are those? They're not growing any crops. They haven't grown crops.
Yeah, forever.
Well, five, six years minimum.
Yeah. That's not functioning as a greenhouse, is it?
No. So I, I think the, the more you struggle, when you're too definitive, you, you.
Might have an unintended.
You get a consequence that you weren't counting on. And when you're too general, you get some consequences.
If you have a transparent building though, like the security of that is a lot lower than solid walls that it might deter you from. Story.
Right, right now, those translucent doors are in. It's like lots of houses have all these fully translucent garage doors. It's, so again, that's not the end of the world. Anyway, but that's at least it's eliminating, um.
That was the whole.
Ten and Euro things.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the whole argument that was brought to S D A B.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I know where it stems from for sure.
Yeah, would council like to see for agricultural purposes or for, for, for food production? And it was part of that definition.
Well, maybe not because then the unintended consequence could negatively affect the haunted houses.
But I don't, we wouldn't say that that would affect your haunted house because a haunted house comes in under special use. So really not getting rid of the.
That's true.
It's just more about.
Um, what's everybody's feeling? What's everybody's feeling?
I myself just could spend primarily glass or other transparent materials, so.
We had two flowers groups. I don't know what we're going to get now because Santera sold. I just don't know. Like I say, if you get too specific, you eliminate things that you didn't want to.
Let's leave it for now.
Okay? So this is going to be incorporated into the land use bylaw and then it'll come to us.
There may need to be some tweaking with regards to the definitions for development authority as well.
Good.
Working on that one.
All right. It'll be a surprise. Thanks, Brian.
Good. Thank you.
Oh.
Make that awesome.
James did. Good. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Municipal manager report to council for information. Chris? Any questions, concerns? Oh. So fill me in on, uh, the practice scenario. What it says here that sent it back, we got our money. So what are, what did we buy or what are we buying? Are we doing a whole new R F P? What are we doing?
We have not got anything currently. We've received the funds as he previously stated. Uh, we are reviewing our fleet to see if there's actually a a need for that. So that was put out prior to me coming. So I just want to make sure that we're not going out and getting another piece of equipment if we can utilize what's current with that. So we have a meeting actually scheduled for tomorrow to review our fleet, uh, pros, cons, anything that we're shortfalls, so on and so forth. And that will also come up then. I'm not saying that we'll have all the answers tomorrow, but through twenty twenty-five, we're analyzing the entire.
So we may or may not need that.
And I have more information. I will bring it back to council for discussion.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Saying none? All in favor, receiving information, opposed, and is carried? Any council report that anybody go and do something exciting?
Not exciting, but we had our A G M at the golf course. Started well received. Actually had a professional disc golf tournament there and this is success.
They got a golf course?
Yeah.
They're not a pro shop guy really likes that. They're not a pro shop guy really likes that.
Yeah, this guy is baby.
Yeah, he's been planning it for a year or two, eh?
Yeah. And they got a grant, there's about eight thousand bucks in costs buying. The baskets and the poles and whatnot, and they got a grant of five thousand bucks, something like that. And then the first professional tournament brought in about twenty-two hundred bucks in revenue.
Also, they almost paid it off.
Almost paid off, then the question was brought up. Is our insurance covering these people in the middle of winter, so? We're just, I haven't, uh. Talked to them too much about that yet, but that's.
Very stupid question.
Do they, uh? Did they fix their, their pond there? Uh, they fixed it, I reported it before, they fixed it by just not having the level as high. Yes, I remember that, I wasn't. So no, it's not really fixed, they managed it.
Okay. But you have board authority. Oh, as a second. Oh, you ever asked an alternate?
The alternate.
Okay, and I don't know, I think I reported this before, but the library board. Or the library has no more union.
Midwest?
No, you didn't report.
Didn't report that at all, that was its short lived.
Yeah, yeah, as of, as of January, the first. The union has been dissolved.
Why?
Well, they found out that they had to talk money by not being in the union that they do.
These were covered up, yeah. Interesting.
So they had to use you in order. Not quite here.
Okay. Well.
Can you send that to your microphone so the town folks can hear that?
Don't do it. Anybody else have been to any meetings that they'd like to report on?
I've been to the chamber meeting.
Yeah?
It wasn't what I received.
You weren't, it's your attitude, Larry.
Reputation precedes you.
I go to the Seawall meetings. And.
What, tell us what Seawall.
Pretty much the same, well, Seawall. I, well, it's not even get into it, but I, I go to the meeting.
Are we, are we in a drought this year? Pardon me, we're gonna be in a drought this year?
They don't know.
Oh.
It was on the news.
Plus they know.
On your side, it's yours now.
Seawall's looking for a new CBO. And they pay very.
Yeah.
That would be a good job.
But you'd have to know something, right?
Well, here you are for that. You know.
Right away, roughly eliminates a lot of us.
You don't have to laugh at that.
There's no IQ test, right?
There's no IQ test, no.
Anyway. Well, thank you for all those reports.
Well.
I had a quiet chat.
Cypress County has an UCF.
So, uh, all in favor of receiving those reports for information?
Do you know where he lives? Forty feet that way.
Chris did.
In the motel.
I have Chris, cuz he's the one that.
Didn't know.
Yes, that's until Denver.
Yeah.
Forty miles got a new. Okay, the on-call reporter.
Not staying in Myrtleton.
Well, that. So that's, this, this is half a year, right?
Yes.
I just asked for this just cuz I might be slightly colorblind. The purple.
Is that purple?
Is that purple for the campground or is that black for miscellaneous?
Is that landfill or is that?
I was, I was having a really hard time figuring out what these were.
Okay.
The blue and the red stand out pretty good, but it's the, the August, September, November, that little purple blur there. I think it's campground. But it looks like a different shade than the square in the campground.
I thought it was miscellaneous.
Well.
Yeah, but I have old eyes, so I.
This campground. And I zoom in, it looks like maybe campground, but it's a darker purple than the campground.
These purple.
So is this a blue and black and gold and white dress situation here or?
It's blue and black.
Yeah. I saw both.
It's gold and white.
Anyways, just a suggestion for. Dummies like me.
You want me to clarify?
Yes, is it campground?
So only had water, so animal and miscellaneous this time.
Animal? Oh, it's miscellaneous.
Well, that is dark purple if I zoom all the way in.
Yeah, why do you have dark purple and light purple on there, Bonnie? Why? So, so what, what constitutes a miscellaneous call then?
Anything, anything that isn't water or sewer.
Well, it would be called, uh. I wanna pay my bill after hours or.
Oh, yeah, we got lots of points.
Water and sewer and animals, that's blue and red, everything else is miscellaneous. I don't care if it's ball diamonds. Or campground. Or have municipal building if you wanna have camp, you know, the campground, the ball diamonds and the rectangular pool, library. Those could all be buildings, yeah, they don't all need to be a different color.
They have both facilities?
Yes, so let's just get down to four basic colors. And what are those? What are the primary colors, people?
Red. Blue, green, yellow.
Hey, that's not bad.
That's the IQ test. Hey, I'm qualified.
And those are all easily discernible on a page.
Yeah, I can't, we've talked about this for this long.
Get over it. All right. Did somebody make a motion that?
No.
No. There was a lot of discussion with no.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
James.
Now we gotta do it all over, we got a lot of. A little motion.
All in favor? Proposed? Gary, good thing we only get that twice a year. Right, landfill grass. More, more coffee, upper end up for a story hilarious.
Just to change that a little bit.
All right, any questions or concerns on the landfill grass? There's no mistaking those three colors.
See that?
All right. All in favor, receiving for information, posed, that's carried. And then important meetings and events. Chris.
How many people are making it for governance priorities? I. Maybe probably not, but I will try. I'm the same category.
I'm marking.
Eric? Eric. What can you do, obviously, what, how he showed up like?
Uh, it's all gonna depend on how busy we are. I have a dentist appointment in the morning, but I'll make it.
Does that mean you won't be able to talk then? Then maybe I'll show up now. Don't we have, do we have another meeting in the morning? Or is that just our finance committee?
No, I believe that's our board meeting now. It does, gotta.
So you can't, you're proposing.
No, that actually. It's a can do both, so.
Really? Why?
It's a question to do, stuff to do. We got work to get done.
Well, if it's a shop day, I'm.
And I might be able to make, I don't know yet, I'm a maybe.
Well, without four. Like, what do we got to do? Have muffins? Costco pizza?
Definitely, I hope.
Yeah, it's okay, I can pick you up soon.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Well, he's a maybe, they're probably, he's a maybe, I'm a maybe, if you three are in for sure, if those two can't make it, I will be here.
Okay, see, all right, so it's just otherwise. It's good to know the council that everything now. And she won't make you try to have one.
To cancel.
Good. All right, perfect.
I sent it out, they just sent it out on Friday.
Oh, yes, you did, that's right.
Yeah. No, it's, they both went and jumped on Friday.
Great.
Yes.
Just worst case scenario if I stay for maybe only a month. I got to do.
Okay.
And the public hearing for the IDP?
I fear they will not be there.
It's for sure for me. Trying to get heads.
So four of us have to be there for that or we can't even vote and that. Bumps the whole IDP amendment. We are one of the three.
And this was supposed to happen.
Communities. Well, I'll.
I'll share on that. Should've told Dan why we can't, why I can't.
You tell Dan it was James Allen's fault. I landed here.
The thing is, it's at night, it's at six-thirty. But whatever, if you aren't there, you can't vote on it.
I landed seven-thirty.
Yeah, you're west jet, you ain't even gonna be there.
I'll try to find a spare.
Okay.
Well, does that mean that, that any counselor can go there and vote? If you are not at that. Hearing. You can't vote. For acceptance of the IDP. It's like, if you're not at a. Public hearing, you can't vote. Let's say you were late and you missed the public hearing and then the regular council meeting happened and that item came up, you can't vote cuz you weren't there.
It's gonna be after a motion is made. And you missed part of the discussion, you can't, you know.
I wish to have both open houses, so I feel like by proxy that means.
So, open houses are totally different than the public hearing.
No, yeah.
I know, it's, it's just an NGA thing and. Yeah, it matters, cuz then there's gonna be. Well. No second or third reading.
I'm the one in December that the public hearing is supposed to be happened in January and. Pushing the city cuz that's when the public hearing was supposed to happen.
So if you can't be there, make damn good cardboard cutouts. We'll put you in the back, a pile.
Yeah, with your hand up, yeah.
Good.
And then, so then everyone, so if there's only four of you there. All four of you would have to be at the next.
Next council meeting.
This gets, okay, no, that's fine.
What is the next council meeting?
Well, the good news is it's still in February.
You can. It would be the February twenty-fourth meeting that we even have to be.
Yeah, that works for me. I've gone twenty before.
I can guarantee any meeting to February, so.
Anyway. Okay, all covered off. All in favor? Posed, that's carried, let's take, uh. Five-ish, seven, seven minutes.